Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience while we were in executive session. As always, no decisions are made. Next item on the agenda is Finance and Facilities Committee Report, but this is actually going to be a report by Vice President Ratzman, I believe. Adam?
All right. Good evening, everybody. So there's another part of this report that I gave at the Finance Facilities Committee meeting was the capital project side of things. Last month, when I gave the report, when Ray and I gave the report on the master plan, I gave an update on that capital project as well. Nothing has changed on that, and we will be building the next five-year capital request in the next coming months. And so in future Board of Trustees meetings, we will have a much more detailed report and presentation on the capital plan moving forward. For tonight, I'm going to be going over the revenue side of our budget for the fiscal year 2425. Before I go into that, I'm going to kind of lay out the approach we're taking this year as we develop our budget and as we bring information and presentations to the Board of Trustees and the committee meetings. We're doing it in three phases this year. The first phase is going through the revenue side of things. So we'll go through what we're projecting for revenue, and this is obviously just estimates at this time. We're still going to be working on finalizing numbers. But we're going to go through the revenue details this evening. Next month, March Board meeting, we'll go through the expected expenditure side of the budget. And then in April, we'll tie everything together into the bigger picture in preparation for the May Board meeting, which will be the final budget approval for the college. So that's kind of what we're doing this evening is going over the first part of that, which is the revenue. So for the revenue projection, it might be a little small for those on the other side. Hopefully, I have this in front of you. There are several columns in this. The first two on the left-hand side there, that's the fiscal year 2223 final budget, and then final actuals. So you can kind of see what we budgeted for and where we ended up with the fiscal year. 2324 budget, that's our current budget for this fiscal year. And then the last three columns are those kind of projections and estimates based on several assumptions that we are looking at moving forward. So the first assumption that we're going to go through is tuition. Now, you can see there on that top line there, tuition increase. There's three scenarios here, one for $100 increase per year. Well, that's supposed to be per semester. It didn't change. $200 per semester, and then $300 per semester. Again, this equates to a 4.2% increase, 8.3 or 12.5. Those do seem extreme. Again, these are just to kind of give you an idea of what happens when we change the tuition model. You know, in years past, we have stated that we have the lowest tuition in all community colleges for SUNY. It's a great talking point, but it doesn't necessarily mean we have to stick to that. So that's why these assumptions are there, not necessarily meaning we're going to pick one of them. You can see in the student revenue lines there how that it changes, the tuition for those various semesters, the fall, winter, spring, and summer. So this year, we have a budget at 7.6. These projections are about 8.7 for that 100 per semester. And these revenue projections are based on their next assumption, which is enrollment projections. We're assuming a 3% increase enrollment, and that's over our current fiscal year actuals, not to the budget number. So that 3% is an increase over actual numbers that we have achieved for this past fall and spring semesters. And then you can see it filters down in each semester there, fall, winter, spring, and summer. The technology fee is not changing as of yet based on those projections. Again, this is just a working model. We'll be updating this once we get towards the finalized projections. The college and high school, our fiscal year 2324 budget was set low as we were not sure what the impact would be to rate offering or implementing the tuition for our college and high school students. We are pleased to share that we have not really seen a huge loss as far as college enrollment, college and high school enrollment. So we are projecting that to increase pretty significantly based on what our current numbers are as well. Again, the went through the second assumption, which is enrollment projections, 3%, and that's in that third line down there. The fourth assumption is state aid. At this point, there is no increase in state aid. We're going to be assuming that we're getting the floor. Right now, in the state budget, there is no increase for community college support. However, we are still strongly advocating for increasing state support through various channels, either through the county or state representatives, even community members in lobbying for state increasing community college support within the state budget. The state is going to be approving their budget in the April timeframe. So at that point in time, we will know if there has been any increases or changes in our state aid, and we will be able to make that change prior to the final budget approval by the board here. Let's see. So charge-back revenue is the next item here. So we go back to local sponsor contribution. That's another assumption that we have to make. So right now, we are developing this model based on a 2% ask from the county, increase in sponsorship. That's the same amount of increase that we requested last year, and they approved. And so again, we're going back and going to be requesting a 2% increase with the expectation in the out years, we're probably going to go down to back to a zero ask increase because of our capital budget. The next several years, we've been asking for significant contributions from the county for a capital master plan. And so we're trying to alleviate some of that additional expenses on their end in the out years by saying we'll do ask for another 2% this year, but in the out years, it'll probably be zero as we are going to be coming with significant requests for capital budgets. So the sponsorship contribution, 2%, it's going to be add about 342,000 to the revenue stream. Then the next item on there is charge-back revenue. So this line is a little bit different than you probably would expect. You can see in the out years, as you increase your tuition, increase in tuition, the charge-back seems to go down. And this is a direct correlation between increasing revenues that offset your operating expenses. Once that happens, then the charge-back rate actually decreases. So that's why that's decreasing a little bit here. And this one is kind of tough to predict. A lot, there are times when students, and this ties into the out-of-state, non-resident tuition as well, if students do not submit their certificate of residency or do not sign an affirmation, then they are charged either dual tuition, or we don't know what county to charge for their charge-backs if they are not a county resident. So between these two lines, we can predict all we want, but you know, if students aren't doing what they are intended to do, it can skew these lines pretty significantly, which is happening with the case this current fiscal year. There seems to be a trend of students not submitting their certificate of residency in time, which then therefore they're charged the dual tuition. The next line there, state aid. There's two lines here, operating rental. The operating is raining flat. This is the line where we get, you know, the floor funding from the state. And then the rental is increasing slightly, and that's just due to our lease agreements through the Family Partnership Center and Fish Guild. We do receive anywhere between 40 and 50% rental reimbursement from SUNY. Depending on the formula that they have, this current fiscal year, we're getting about 44% reimbursed from our rental contracts. We will receive notification prior to the budget approval of what that rate will be for the next fiscal year. And then the last line here, offsetting revenue. These are still kind of a work in progress as well. Other fees, this is increasing mainly due to our realization of higher return from our interest income. Course fees, it's kind of flat right now, but we are developing our fee schedule, which will be approved by the Board of Trustees prior to, in conjunction with the approval of the budget. So this will, that fee schedule will also come out. There may be some changes to that, which will affect the course fees. And then other revenue and credit fee revenue, no change is projected at this time for that program. So overall, you can see that the projected revenue for these three scenarios is 63.78 million, 64.49 million, or 65.5 million. That's compared to our current budget of revenue of about 60 million. What I think the direction that we're going in coming out of the committee meeting is looking at that first column where it's $100 per semester credit semester or 4.2% increase for tuition projections, the 3% enrollment projection, and a 2% sponsor increase moving forward. So from here forward, we'll probably remove two of these columns and just focus on one assumption model so that we can build a more accurate model when we start putting in the expenses on the side of things. Any questions on this?
That's for Steve or Adam. And by the way, Steve, thank you. You've been guiding this committee really well because I sit in. So a lot of this has actually come into play with discussions by the Finance Committee. Also, just so everyone to note, the assumption that we would have a 3% increase in students is the same across, no matter how much you raise the tuition. It's typical that there would be an inverse reaction if you raised tuition by 12.5%. You might see less than 3%. So that's probably also what's guiding us. And in addition, again, I don't know that SUNY trustees would actually allow us to increase tuition that high at that particular time in such a one-year leap. But anybody else have any questions or comments? Because I think Steve's looking for direction.
Just a comment, I think, and it goes back to the sponsor share. I think engaging the county, both the legislature and the executive side early on will really help to, if you know that they're okay with 2%, I think it makes the decisions a lot easier.
So our plan of attack on that as well is it's the same, we're going to approach it the same way I'm approaching this body with the presentations. We already have meetings scheduled, I think, next week with the legislature and the county executive's office to review the same thing. We're going to start talking about revenue projections, what we're thinking, not just from the budget standpoint, but we're also going to bring in the other VPs to talk about programming and enrollment, to give them the big picture as well, so that when we do come in front of that body for a budget approval, they know what we're coming at. And we are confident that they're going to vote for it. Thank you.
And this includes meeting with leadership of both sides, right?
Yes, correct.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so that, you know, there was an intentional change a little bit this year where we wanted to have more frequent discussions with the legislature rather than just coming once and saying, here's our budget, take it or leave it, right? And to engage them more. We do have a meeting set up with leadership of both parties. So we'll get everybody there, have this initial discussion, and tell them what we're thinking, and we can get some feedback on where they're heading. And just, I mean, Adam was just laying scenarios on the table, and we had that same discussion in committee meeting that the larger increase, you know, would not fly. But again, you just, you throw these down the table, good discussion at a committee level to have, I think, so.
But I think it can be a double-edged sword because you also have to be careful that the narrative doesn't get out that, oh, DCC is looking to raise tuition double digits.
By 12%.
So, I mean, throwing these things out does have a drawback to it.
Yeah, no, it does. And one of the reasons, and again, we're going to be taking that out in future presentations, but if we look at, if we look at our expenses for this fiscal year, they're 65 million. This kind of shows, even if we did raise that much, we wouldn't be meeting next year's expense model based on 4% increase in salaries and all that other stuff. So even if we did raise it that much, it's not going to fiscally make us sound in one year. It's a more conservative approach by doing it slowly over time. But it's just to show scenarios and not that they're realistic, but just kind of answer that question, well, what would you need to do to get you towards your expense budget this year, which is 65 million? Well, we'd have to raise tuition by 12 and 1/2%, right? Not a good story to tell, not publicly, right? We don't want that message.
We'll figure out ways to control expenses.
Yeah.
I'll also add that we are working with Chairman Truitt to have the board develop and pass a resolution in support of our ask, our advocacy ask of the state as well. And so they're willing to do that, and we're developing a template to share with them that they can work on.
This is great that we're all marching in lockstep together, the county and county government, as well as the college. So this is where we need to be. Anyone else? Thank you, Adam. Steve, anything you want to add?
No, that was it. That was the main topic of our, of our committee meeting. So I'll have a few other minor comments when it comes to the board meeting, but that'll do it for workshop.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an educational presentation by John.
And I believe every committee saw this. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, many of you have seen this presentation, so I apologize if it feels repetitive. I'm going to take you through the new logo brand development implementation plan. So wideout, we ask, it aligns with the adoption of our new strategic plan. It reflects a new look of our website and our marketing materials, the opening of our second Center of Excellence, and we've introduced quite successful new programs in cannabis retail management, direct support professional, and our mechatronics industry training programs. And there's a lot of buzz and momentum surrounding DCC. Last October, Dr. Biden visited us at our ribbon cutting for the mechatronics lab. And think about it, of all the colleges in New York, she chose to visit us. Also, in January, at the Regional County Chamber of Commerce breakfast, Central Hudson made an announcement of a significant partnership with DCC in support of our Center of Excellence for Industry and Innovation. And just two weeks ago, we kicked off that workshop, that advisory workshop, to expand our offerings at the mechatronics lab. Also, just recently, Dr. Jordan was, received a leadership award from the Tassiji, excuse me, the Tassiji Airmen's Local Chapter. So a lot of people are looking at us, wanting to work with us. There's a lot of buzz or momentum around DCC. Also, there's an increase in enrollment for the first time in 12 years. And as you've heard, it's continuing in spring, and projections for fall look quite good. It supports the growth of the DCC, of DCC Foundation as well. And quite frankly, it's about time. So when we look at other schools within the SUNY system, many like New Poles will take a building on campus as their logo, their graphic icon. Or SUNY Old Westbury will look at the surrounding areas with the trees and the wooded campus surrounding it. Or SUNY Orange will play on one of the letters in its name. And we are one of the few's that do not have a graphic icon. So this all started back in October of 2022, where we started developing different concepts and then sharing it out in the spring of '23 to the campus until we are here today in February presenting it to the board. So we had two concepts that we were looking at. And again, logo mark is simply that graphic that goes along with the name of the institution, that branding element. And to understand that these are extremely rough concepts, we would hope to put one forward. And we're really leaning towards the monarch. And why is that happening? Due to the next 10 plan, we're moving a lot of the activity to the north part of campus, and that's where the monarch resides. So as you come on campus, voila, there it is. So let's take a look at how we do this and what it would cost. So Phase 1 would take place hopefully in May of 2024 and be completed in September. The logo and style guide development would be our first task. And then implementation of monument signs on the main campus, signs on the aviation center, Fish Guild, merchandise rebranding, and our digital presence. So the first stage is the logo and style guide development. As I mentioned earlier, those are rough. The graphics are rough. The colors have to be worked on. The actual name of the college, what kind of fonts are we going to use? Are we going to be uppercase, lowercase, a mixture? All these things need to be explored. So that would happen once we actually give a concept direction to a consultant. They would work on that. They would work on the refinement of colors, scale as well. They would develop a logotype horizontally or vertically stacked, guidelines for usage, primary, secondary colors, and as I said earlier, typography and the font usage. Also added this would be a business suite, a setup for all our stationary, business card, PowerPoints, letterhead, email signatures, all consistent in all our communications, as well as printed digital templates and banners. Total cost for this is a little under $30,000. So very quickly, this is a few pages from the sample style guide of logo usage, stacked, horizontal, how it's used in different divisions, how it's used in banners, and the business suite I mentioned, letterhead, PowerPoint, email signatures, business cards, and obviously the color palettes, primary and secondary to be used. So let's take a look at sign implementation first in the main campus. In this exercise and estimates, we took a look at our existing structures and size, utilizing the base here, although some people want to get rid of the bushes. This actually would be relief signs. I know it looks rather flat, but the letters would be relief, 3D, if you can imagine that. And here's an example of the monarch, the large D. So we currently have three wedge-style monument signs, two on each, and two single monument signs. So that's a total of eight signs, installation, and build approximately 45,000. So taking a look at the aviation center wall sign, all the heavy lifting and the big cost has already happened. It's already built in. So we would be just replacing the letters on the wall itself. And here is the rendition of the monarch, the big D. Total cost, including installation, around 17,000. Moving on to Fish Guild, these are flat. These are not relief signs. There would be two on each side of the building, what the monarch might look like, the D. Total cost for these two signs, including installation, 3,700. So when it comes to merchandise rebranding, we were told there is no additional cost for the third or fourth color, for that matter, no cost for creating the graphics. There would be no changes in cost to students or our customers or what we would receive. And we would be able to do this whenever we wanted to. If we wanted to rebrand right away, instead of our normal ordering process, we could do so, and it would be fallout responsibility to sell the old merchandise. Web and social rebranding, yes, everything will have to change on our website, our digital presence. We do a lot of digital work, landing pages, social media, on and on and on. That would be the responsibility of the marketing department. So to recap, looking at Phase 1 costs, we talked about the logo and stock eye development, signage, merchandise rebranding, digital presence, approximately 95,000 to complete Phase 1. Onto Phase 2, which would begin in October of 2024 and be completed in September 2025, we look at introducing something new, main campus pole pocket banners, directional signs would need to change. We would introduce something new, campus LED digital sign, our letterhead business cards. We have signs at the Family Partnership Center that would have to change. All the room signage around campus would have to change. The interior graphic on the aviation center and the mechatronics labs, those big wall graphics, if some of you recall those, would have to change, and departmental pull-up banners. Let's take a look at that. So the, there's nothing more that brings life to a campus, except Scott would say more students, than these banners around campus. They're bright, they're colorful. And just to give you an idea of what it might look like with the big D. And again, these are conceptual. We're looking at 12 pole banners and brackets, approximately 6,000. That's actually 24 banners, so they count it by pole. And our directional signage would have to change. We were planning, we looked at this, our estimate, we can use the existing structures, so we're only replacing the actual sign itself. So what it would look like with the monarch, the big D. So we have 18 sign panels at the moment, so approximately 10,000 to replace them. Then the other thing I had mentioned that would be new, which is a brilliant idea, wasn't mine, would be a single-side LED digital sign. So if you've noticed, when you've come to campus, when we have a new spring enrollment or something we want to tell students, we print out banners, put them in poles, and put them in the ground. And after a while, the weather does a lot of damage to them. This not only replaces that, but gives us the ability to have many messages coming to our students as they are going to the parking lot. So this could be extremely valuable for communicating many things going on campus. So to recap, Phase 2, pole pocket banners, as I mentioned, no additional cost for letter heart business card rebranding, because we do that normally. That would be our normal ordering pattern. Same thing with the room, not, well, similar, room sign changeover. We do that internally. We print it internally. We place it internally. And the interior update for the aviation center and mechatronics lab is not that bad because it's only a piece of the vinyl that needs to be replaced. So that's good news. We estimate 20 department pull-up banners. So every, from the career center act to every department has pull-up banners, athletics. We estimate for 20, cost of 2,800. So total cost, a little over 78,000 for Phase 2. To recap, Phase 1 and 2 totals, we're looking at about approximately $173,000. Do we have any questions?
The board has, I think everyone on the board has seen this. Maybe Angela hasn't. That's about it, probably.
That was so much of the first presentation.
That's what I was going to say.
I apologize for the rest.
No, no. So you've refined some of it, from what I've seen as well. Just so that everyone else in the audience knows, the board, each of the committees did discuss briefly the two logos we were seeing. The conclusion, for the most part, seemed to be that we preferred the art piece blown up as opposed to the Hudson Valley because the Hudson Valley, that symbol's been used by other organizations maybe too many times. And also, I believe the idea of being able to brand with this one. So in other words, on, say, our website, you have a drone coming in to see that particular piece of sculpture and art. And I think also Maya had said that students are really interested more in maybe having the, not logo, but our sports, our mascot, be more prominent as well.
Yeah.
So that was discussed as well. And I know many students also in the survey said they preferred something that was unique to the campus as opposed to the generic Hudson Valley thing. So that's sort of where we were as a Board of Trustees.
I would also like to point out that today I did show a few people the options for the logo that you had in mind, and some of whom did not really agree with, or they didn't even recognize that the monarch.
Wasn't monarch.
Exactly. So that, I know you said that stuff is all in the process. However, some people also don't really associate it as a college. They were telling me it reminds them of like depressing things, which is very unfortunate.
Well, I kind of look at it from a marketing communications lens. When you go in this direction, it's how you present it. And that we would actually use the logo and the monarch to educate people on the structure.
Yeah.
Whether, as Chairman Dupree mentioned, whether it's a video on the website going through the monarch, it becomes everything we do in our communications, that piece is there until it becomes DCC, until, you know, we really resonate that this is ours and it's here, whether it's a windmill, a weather vane, a building, or a clock. And that's the approach you take to really embed it in the minds of the community and your prospective students.
I guess, because other students were also asking if, like, why don't they, why don't we have Falco or some part of like a Falcon to be a part of it? Like, that's what they seem to want as the attraction.
Yeah. And I think we mentioned this before. Typically, we would use that in student communicate, we already do. It's all over our Facebook communications. It's in a lot of our of our student services communications, when we, when we talk about academic resources and career tips, we often bring FALCO into the mix to tell the story. But typically, an institution is going to have that institution logo, if you will, brand, if you will, and then separate, but a part of that, excuse me, is that athletic symbol, and FALCO being ours in many way, our mascot. So we would continue to use FALCO probably even more, but as far as the actual institutional logo, it would probably be better to stay away from the athletic mascot. I know we like FALCO.
I just think of it as more of an attraction towards students on an institutional level because it, like, because our main focus is to increase enrollment and just try to make this a college.
It would be unique, it would be unique, and I would say that a college has a perception. There is, there's a built-in perception of a college, what is a college? This institution of higher learning, that there is some seriousness to it, that I am going there to be educated, to advance my life, to learn something. Now, so that's that fine line, where we want to be friendly and welcoming and make sure that when you are here, it's extremely enjoyable and supportive. But we also need to walk that line that, yes, we are an institution of higher learning, and there are expectations on what that means to commit to us, I think.
Anyone else? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda are liaison reports, Frank, DCC Foundation.
Yes, good evening, everyone. The Foundation Board meeting will be held this upcoming Friday, March the first. The gala is doing quite well with several new sponsorships and some increasing their support. Special thank you to Michael Dupree and Michael Fleischer, as well as Evelyn Panici and Real Carding for their champion sponsorships. To date, one hundred and eighty-five tickets are sold, it may even be a little more than that by now. The foundation received a twenty-six thousand dollar donation through the community foundations of the Hudson Valley for DCC cares. This is the second gift from a anonymous donor. Foundation Board member Keith Daly has made a fifteen thousand dollar pledge to start an endowment for athletics, and the foundation just had a meeting with its auditor in the Foundation Board Governance Committee. The auditor issued an unmodified opinion, and that is the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. This is the highest level of assurance that they can give.
Thank you, any questions for Frank? DCC Association, Tara, there's not really anything for us to report. I do want to report out, though, that we do have, as required by the bank that underwrites our bonds for the dormitory, we do have an ad hoc group forming, Adam? Advisory group? And do you, our first meeting is?
I'll talk about it.
Okay. At any rate, this is, and at the same time, we are also meeting or having discussion, preliminary discussions, I think actually that's even too, that's premature. We're feeding some data over for some discussions initially with a different bank to see where that might go. And then, more excitingly, if you see the pictures, you can see around you, a group of individuals, trustees and our president, went to the ACCT National Legislative Summit in Washington DC, and we have two of the members who have, well, three, Peter, but Maya and Steve both went, so Steve, let me start with you.
Okay.
I know you're prepared for this, that's why.
No, if you want to defer to everybody's ear, that's fine. All right, well, anyway, thank you. First, I just want to say that I think we all had a great time, and I want to thank Dr. Jordan for the invitation to join him in Washington DC and the opportunity to learn so much and support DCC in a new and different way. So the first day, we spent the first day learning the basics of advocacy and gaining a better understanding of the structure of the ACCT organization, that's the Association of Community College Trustees, where our session mostly included first-time attendees at the summit. We were provided with background information on the Higher Education Act, where we covered the basics of Pell Grants, campus-based aid available, and direct loans available to students, as well as other outreach and initiatives out there. We also reviewed the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, signed into law back in two thousand fourteen. We gained an understanding of the training grant opportunities available through this legislation. On the second day, we really got into the meat of the summit. I estimated we had just over a thousand people gathered from community colleges around the country to hear the twenty-twenty-four Community College federal legislative priorities, the issues that impact all of us, such as supporting workforce Pell Grants so that our short-term certification programs can qualify for financial support, ending taxation of Pell Grants so that we're not supporting those in need and then taking the dollars back through taxation, and altering the education tax credit criteria so that more people can qualify. And then, in addition, Dr. Jordan provided us with his priorities as they relate to DCC. So we were well-prepared to head to Capitol Hill for two days of discussions with members of Congress and leaders of several federal agencies. We had an opportunity to meet, talk with all three of our local New York State congressmen, Mark Molinaro, Pat Ryan, and Michael Lawler. We delivered our message, and they were very receptive and supportive. Our meetings with the various agencies had multiple purposes. It was a mixture of information gathering, delivering our message of needs and priorities, and seeking their support. I felt all the discussions were very productive. Most importantly, we will look to build on those relationships established in Washington that week, which I'm sure will lead to many good things to come for DCC in the future. Just overall, it was an amazing week, an educational, interactive, and rewarding week, and I was glad to be a part of it and support of DCC. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Stephen? Maya, do you want to add something to this?
I just think it was a really informative trip, especially as being the student trustee, I was only one of a hundred and twenty, and being able to voice the issues that you can see, that I see on campus face-to-face, it was really impactful for the future of our, like, college and for like the younger generations, because everything that I went for was for the students and to make sure that just everyone can be benefited by it, that's really it.
Thank you, Maya. And I believe we had a little bit of good news after the summit, Peter? President Jordan, we got a little email from Mr. Lawler, I believe?
From, we had the opportunity also to visit with Senator Gillibrand's staff, and a couple days ago, received an email inviting us to apply for congressional direct spending funds to support the college as well. So we met today and started a conversation about what that might look like and how we might move forward and who would be our partners in that effort and so forth. So, yeah, there's some fruit coming out of that. We also met with folks from agencies that included Commerce to hear about and talk about the CHIPS Act, the Labor Department, we visited with folks from their Education and Training Administration, NSF, the National Science Foundation, we visited with, as well as the Transportation Department, we visited with folks from the FAA as well. So as you heard from Steve and Maya, it was a powerful week, and, yeah, we burned some souls, shoe souls.
Before I leave this item to go to our regular meeting, I just want to ask, I think today I received an email from Senator Gillibrand's office touting that there's, I think, three-nine-point-one million in mental health aid. Did you guys receive that?
It may be in the inbox, I didn't see.
If not, I'll make sure you get it, because I believe that there might be some funds for mental aid here, or mental health services here on campus, which we're always looking for ways to defray our costs. Any questions for Peter, Maya, or Stephen? Okay, then let's go ahead and call the regular meeting to order at seven fourteen, seven thirteen. Linda, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ponticello. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank Costello.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Caswell.
Present.
Ms. Maya Chinkan.
Here, present.
Ms. Derek Clow.
Here.
Mr. Michael Kreis.
Should I break the trend? Here, there I did it.
Ms. Angela Fleslin.
Present.
Ms. Lisa Gardi. Mr. Evis Husma.
Present.
Ms. Evelyn Panici.
Present.
Ms. Linda Pratt.
Present.
Farm, present.
Thank you. Make it a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Stand up.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions, that motion carries. Joy, I don't believe that anyone signed up for public comment tonight. Okeydoke, thank you. Next item on the agenda would be consideration of amendments for our meeting of January twenty-third. Has everyone had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Approved as written.
There's a motion to approve as written.
Next up.
We're being very efficient tonight, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is committee reports, a reminder that we meet as committees, I'm the ex officio member, but the committees meet before the meeting, and then we also occasionally discuss items at our workshop. In this instance, we didn't really have a lot of items. The first committee report would be academic and student affairs. Chair Gardi is not here, Maya, Serena, can you like to add to it?
I think I have it.
Tara, you do, you do tonight, thank you.
Other than the discussion of the logo that we just had, we basically dealt with informational updates, a discussion on the start date for spring semester and calendar year twenty-four, twenty-five, and how enrollment may be impacted due to Martin Luther King Day. College is working with scheduling to take a look at various impacts to shifting the start date to the week after Martin Luther King. Committee was provided an update on sabbatical and tenure promotions. All recommendations have been reviewed and will be coming to the board at the March twenty-six meeting. The committee was provided with a short report on the ACCT Legislative Summit, and also important save the dates for upcoming events like the DCC Student Leaders Dinner, the Foundation's Bridge to the Future Gala, the Honors Convocation, and this year's commencement ceremony.
Any questions for trustee Clow? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is board policy and the star of our retreat, Chair Guzman.
So our committee meeting was held on February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, and we reviewed some items for the upcoming board retreat at that time. We did go over two policies that are up for reaffirmation today that I will be presenting in a short minute. We did have some similar informational updates for the, some of the events that we, Maya trustee, has gone over. So at this point, I'm going to move over to resolutions. So I bring forth our resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight now for the following resolution and move to its adoption, whereas in keeping with good governance practice, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee has reviewed, reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis, and whereas based upon this review, the Policy Committee has determined that the policy on consensual amorous relations in the workplace should be reaffirmed and remain in effect. Now therefore it be resolved that, based upon the recommendations of the Policy Committee and the aforementioned policy on consensual slash amorous relations in the workplace is hereby reaffirmed and is to remain in effect, and be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries as well.
I also offer resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. I hereby offer the following resolution and move it to its adoption, whereas in keeping with good governance practice, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis, and whereas based upon this review, the Policy Committee has determined that the whistleblower policy should be reaffirmed and remain in effect. Now therefore it be resolved that, based upon the recommendations of the Policy Committee, the affirmation whistleblower policy is hereby reaffirmed and is to remain in effect, and be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Second. Thank you, Frank. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries as well. Thank you, Evis. Next item on the agenda is finance and facilities. Chair Caswell, do you have some more to add, I think?
Yep, thank you. I have no resolutions to bring before the board tonight, but the main item we had on the agenda this month was the twenty-four, twenty-five budget presentation, which you heard in workshop where Adam came in and gave us the update. We had, you know, a lot of discussion to start the process, you know, as Adam summarized in the workshop, we'll focus on revenue first and then expenses, and then move forward to wrapping it up in a draft budget. So I think we've laid out a good process that lets us to kind of step forward and not just receive everything all at once, so I think that's a good shift this year. We also had a preview of the DCC logo presentation that you saw also in workshop, and John came in and gave us that update, so we thank him for joining us at our meeting. And then we wrapped up by receiving informational updates on upcoming events, which previously I mentioned, and that summarizes the activities, finance and facilities, good month.
That's true. Any questions for Stephen? Okeydoke. Last item on the agenda is personnel and community relations, Chair Fleslin.
I will first, my colleague, Mr. Costello.
We met on February the fifteenth, it was myself and Chair Dupree. We, of course, saw the logo presentation, but we also discussed at length some personnel matters, including legal updates, labor management updates, sabbatical and tenure promotions, the ACCT National Legislative Summit, as well as some additional save the dates.
Any questions for Frank? Thank you. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is report of the student trustee, trustee Chinkan.
So today we had a student government meeting where I just gave a report to all of the students on everything that happened to, in the NLS, just to spread awareness about all the grants and all the stuff that we learned about, so they know and so they can also spread the information. Earlier after, after the trip, I also met with John Meagle, and he's also thought it would be a good idea to spread this information as well, so I have to get a report over to him, and then the information will be spread out. We kept also discussing like about tuition and how we received an email from the FCCC about governance, and like they wanted us to take a survey, I believe, and Matt Hanlon doesn't think that the survey is like really well-written, so that's that. And then, so last time I mentioned too about like food across campus, how it's like very scarce, or like it's very limited to the students. Over time, I've actually noticed that we have something called Costa Coffee, which is in the library and in the residence hall in the Conklin atrium. And then they also started something, there's like a little fridge with like prepackaged salads that students can use with their meal plan, which it's not a lot, but it is something better. It's better than nothing, honestly. And then, to take things to more of a lighter level, today the GSA held a bake sale in Hudson Hall from twelve to four. Then on Thursday, the Muslim Student Association is holding their first event to introduce the club and just what they have to offer. That will also be in the Conklin atrium around five o'clock. There'll be food, there'll be henna, I will be there giving out some food as well. And on April fourth, the Black Student Union is working with a couple of other clubs to have their masquerade ball, that will be April fourth from like five to ten, and that's everything.
Did I hear you say there'd be henna, a lot of those food, at the Muslim? Did I hear you say there'd be henna of Westworld's food at the Muslim Student Association? Does that mean like?
It's.
I can't think of the word I'm trying to use, where you're going to create patterns with henna?
Yeah.
Like tattooing?
Yeah, but they're not permanent.
I've seen them at an Indian wedding before. What time is that one? I may want to go over there and watch. Seriously, what day is that and what time again?
It's this Thursday at five in the Conklin atrium.
Just for fun.
It's going to be a lot of fun.
I love seeing the patterns and all that when it happens, and it's, yeah, yeah.
I actually know how to do henna.
Oh, wow.
Me too, Maya.
Can you take it through that meditation?
I'll do it.
Any other questions besides my ridiculous one of Maya? Maya, thank you for that comprehensive report, and I know that the food issue is continuing, but yes, steps are being made. They may be small, but steps are being made to try to right that.
Yeah.
Every dress. So, the next item on the agenda is my report, and I'll try to be quick. Student ridership of the Deddy County Bus System continues to remain strong. We had almost fourteen hundred rides happening in just two weeks in January. You can guess that the most used route is the one that runs between DCC, Marist, Poughkeepsie Plaza, and now you can walk from Poughkeepsie Plaza to Hudson Heritage, which seems to be aimed in its offerings so far mainly to students. Dr. Karen Riedel took eight students to the UN Headquarters in New York City to hear presentations by high-level UN officials and ambassadors and representatives from across the world. The meeting was titled Putting It Into Conflict: Prescriptions For A Peaceful Future. Very apt topic right now, and the future provided a unique opportunity for students to observe how complex the nature of attempts international cooperation really can be. Dana Gavin, who's here, Director of the Writing Center, co-authored a paper published by EduCase in December entitled Cross-Campus Approaches To Building A Generative AI Policy. Also very topical right now, Dana, and she's also co-authored a chapter in A Flatfoot Pact Affect: Theorizing Pedagogies Of Seriality and Unboxing An Assembly. Dana, do you want to add something to that? Come on, say something.
Um, sure.
Which one?
Yeah, well, yeah, so the book chapter doesn't have anything to do with AI.
No.
But everything I've been working on since does everything to do with AI.
Thank you. It's a good topic right now. It's been a topic that we actually are looking at policies on. And I also just wanted to point out that when I saw you earlier and mentioned this, I've been reading your name a lot up here in these accolades, so it's nice to see that over and over again. Marketing. We had a hundred and ninety-nine new students at DCC starting this fall and spring who had their initial inquiry through AdWords. This is a marketing technique that DCC tried out for the first time this past year, and that would be ten percent of our new students for the year. Twenty-two of the hundred and twenty new aviation and airframe students who came this fall and spring first found out about DCC through a targeted social media campaign. Congratulations, John. And the major success of the direct service professional enrollment was strongly supported by, again, targeted social media marketing across platforms. The ACT Center, earlier this month, nineteen DCC Student Services staff attended a DCC Marist Professional Development Day. Attended workshops on transfer admissions, a student-focused transfer panel discussing effective transfer experiences, and a Marist campus tour which identified other institutional opportunities for potential future DCC Marist partnerships. In athletics, the Tenth Annual Officials Versus Cancer Tournament raised over ten thousand dollars and now surpasses a cumulative donation of a hundred thousand dollars to the American Cancer Society. The event showcased the talents of ten high school boys' basketball teams from Section One and Section Nine, drawing an audience of over a hundred spectators. In our housing, DCC has two hundred and twenty-four students for the spring two thousand twenty-four residents, and the fall two thousand twenty-four, spring two thousand twenty-five housing application opened earlier this month. Last, board members you may have heard attended a retreat this past weekend, and again, I give my gratitude toward my colleagues for all the time and attention. We engaged in discussions and exercises about aligning policies to advance DCC strategic vision and mission. We also examined our own self-assessment as a board, looking for opportunities to improve, and yes, we did find places to improve. More importantly, when we were doing our exercises, we broke out into different groups of four, each time changing members. What was fun was to see that each time we had issues to put up, we often aligned the first two issues together each time, which shows that we're building the cohesion that I think is important toward moving the college forward to the strategic vision, because I learned that I better start saying strategic vision every time I do anything for the college. Any questions on my report? Peter, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things, some introductions, updates or announcements about upcoming events, and we'll call it evening. So, let's start with introductions. I'm going to ask Dr. Houston to make an introduction of new addition to instruction and learning.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor and privilege to introduce Ann Deutsch. She is our new Director of the Library. She began.
Can we get Ann to stand?
She joined us at the start of February, and she comes to us from SUNY New Paltz.
Ann, would you like to say anything?
I'm just incredibly excited to be here and to have this opportunity, and looking forward to helping to build the enrollment.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Next, I'm going to ask Adam to introduce our new AVP.
Take you longer to walk over there. Associate Vice President of Human Resources, Irene Ackland. She started earlier this month. She's on week four. She comes to us from. She's already made a huge impact on HR operations.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm proud to work with everyone.
Same here, Irene.
And I'm going to ask Scott to make one introduction and two announcements about individuals who are changing roles here at the college, as well as introducing our new AVP.
Okay, first up of the three, we have Stephen Passata. He is being promoted to Coordinator of EOP. Stephen's been at DCC for seven years as our Diversity Admissions Counselor, playing a significant role smoothing the path for underserved students, and he's also currently the co-chair of our Diversity Council, and he was an EOP student himself at SUNY New Paltz, so he has a great passion for this work.
Scott mentioned, I'm just honored to serve a program that I am a part of, so just thank you again for this opportunity.
Next up, another promotion is Dr. Melissa Carlo. She's being promoted to Assistant Dean of Enrollment in Student Success. For the last seven and a half years, she's been our Director of our very successful trio program, and that will be, continue to be part of her portfolio. She'll also be working with Stephen in the EOP. She's also right now our interim Chief Diversity Officer until we have a new one. In March of two thousand twenty-three, she completed her EDD at Concordia University in Wisconsin, and her dissertation looked at the persistence of first-generation community college students during the pandemic and focused on the academic advising strategies that helped them. Melissa.
And I am excited to continue working with the DCC students and community.
Thank you.
And finally, starting next Monday, Brian Sunday will be our new Associate Vice President for Enrollment in Student Success. He comes to us from SUNY Rockland, where he is Executive Director of Enrollment Services. He also has experience as an enrollment consultant for Chestnut Hill College in Philadelphia, and Director of Graduate Admissions at Manhattanville College, and Director of Undergraduate Admissions at the College of New Rochelle. And at each school stop he's been at, they've seen significant enrollment growth, so he's had some good strategies, and we'd like to welcome him here to help us do the same thing.
Thank you. Most important piece is hopefully we can wrap this up as quickly as we can, because we have a bad basketball game going on right now. So, I'm excited to hit the ground running in that regard, to see what they can do in the playoffs tonight. But sincerely, to the entire Board of Trustees, Chair Dupree, Dr. Jordan, Scott, sincerely thank you for giving me the opportunity. Some might say, you know, you're saying thank you for a job that you earned, but really, this is not a job to me. I live in the service area, a Brewster resident. My son is in preschool at the Universal FreeK in Brewster. It's truly a vision of mine to be able to serve the community that I live in, and to be given that opportunity now is just, it's a phenomenal chance for me to show you all what I'm about, what we can do. And there's a lot of short-term work to be done and long-term work, and Scott has made sure I hit the ground running. So, you'll all see me on Monday, and we'll get right to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. So, Scott, while you have the mic, Scott is going to give us a census date enrollment update.
Yes, I think it's not too different from what I gave you last month. We have just under thirty-eight hundred students at census for a little over forty-one thousand credits. That's three hundred and twenty-four more students and over thirty-six hundred more credits than last year, an increase of between nine and ten percent for the year. Tuition and fees for the term are about eight hundred and fifty thousand above the enrollment goal we had for the term. Roughly one-third of that increase over budget can be attributed to our DSP Direct Support Professional Micro-Cadential Program, which enrolled nearly a hundred and seventy new students. This has been a huge cross-campus, every division who is involved in this, we are very far ahead. For everyone else at SUNY, we're really the leaders in this area, and it's made a big difference. And we're hoping that it will continue. There's still funding going for, looks like several years, and hoping for a large cohort again in the fall. New students in the spring were four thirteen, which was just two fewer than last year, and last year, if you remember, we had a large increase for the first time in a long time. When I'm talking about new, I mean new matriculated students. When we talk about new in a broader sense, new non-matriculants, people coming in for micro-credentials or other reasons, we actually had an increase of a hundred and fifty-five new students with the micro-credentials. The DSP was certainly a big part of that, but that's a forty percent increase in new students in the spring. In the residence hall, we heard the update about that earlier, about two hundred and twenty-four students, a small decline of only fourteen from the fall. Typically, we would have lost fifty from the fall, so that's a big success. It was part better retention, but also more new students coming in in the spring. Concurrent enrollment in the high school this spring is a little over fourteen hundred students for over six thousand credits. That is a decline of nearly forty percent from last year, but it's still well above what we were budgeted at for the year. The budget amount is probably two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand above the expectation for revenue for concurrent students. Between fall, spring, and concurrent, we've closed about thirty-five percent of the budget gap that we had, that we were expecting to use our fund balance for this year. So, just from enrollment, we've cut more than a third of that gap. Looking forward to next year, applications for the fall are a little over twenty-one hundred. That's up about three percent. As I mentioned last week, I'm not thrilled with that number, mainly because the applications are softer. A lot more came in with the SUNY app. We know that means they're going to be applying to the four-year schools as well. The yield on those applications last year was not nearly as good as on other applications. The other concern over coming into next year, and Brian, I'm looking for your help on this one as we move forward, is the FAFSA. Right now, the number of FAFSA's completed are forty percent below nationwide than where they were last year at the same time. The new rollout of the new form has not been smooth, so we're going to have to do everything we can to get our students to complete those FAFSA forms, so they can get the financial aid. The forty percent mark is probably low for the types of students we get. It's probably more like fifty to sixty percent among that group decline in having them completed. So, that's going to be a major part of our push as we look towards fall. I mean, we fortunately have some programs like DSP where the FAFSA isn't going to matter, but if we do not get the bread and butter students in and get them to complete their FAFSA, we could have more difficult time with enrollment. We are also in the midst of all the, working with our partner schools with denied students. That would include New Paltz, Marist, Hunter College, where they are sending emails to all their denied students, or in some cases, just denied students from particular areas, telling them they have a path from DCC back to them if they come here, earn their degree with a two-point five. And that's what I've got.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Scott? Just one thing to note, even though we've had the decline in the number of concurrent students, we also had some schools that opted out of even participating, I believe. Correct. Lords? Lords? The one that's charging more for theirs. Sorry. But we expect there to be a bit of a transition, and yes, having said it on the interview, your interview, where I was blown away by your mastery of details, we will have to do something about the FAFSA thing, because that is a troubling sign for enrollment, particularly amongst all the other good news we've had.
And we just received an MOA from Brewster for concurrent enrollment. Yes, so already our new AVP is hard at work.
More importantly, the first thing we will do on Monday when I get here is we'll be establishing a FAFSA simplification team when we go across campus, and if anyone on the board wants to join us, we will be training the trainer on the FAFSA to help support our continuing new students. It will be uplifted by communication plans to make sure they know what we have going on and are considering our students, to make sure they're aware of what we're going to be offering them. It will be heavily event-based, so they're completing the FAFSA with us, and I would like you all to know that I will be your first volunteer to join that FAFSA simplification team. So, we will have a significant plan in place to address the question.
Thank you, Brian. And welcome again. I also want to make sure that the board knows that last week we learned that Poughkeepsie City School District has unofficially been awarded an early college high school, a Smart Scholars Early College High School, in connection with DCC. So, this is adding to the PTAC that we are now developing to start this fall with Duchess Boses. So, here comes an up at the early college high school, creating pathways for students to complete both a high school diploma and an associate's degree at the same time. In terms of some upcoming events that I want the board to be aware of, on this Thursday, there will be a ribbon cutting for the Corey Ingram Circle, which is at Smith and Creek Road, and there will be a reception following a brief ceremony here on campus to celebrate the beginning of that monument. In addition to, in addition to that, there will be on Sunday, bless you, bless you, there will be on Sunday here at DCC in this very same room, a celebration of life, the life of Susan Hochhauser, the mother of Karen Hochhauser, here at two o'clock in the afternoon, and you're welcome to join us. This is being advanced by Assembly Member DeeDee Barrett, and it's the kickoff to Women's History Month. So, please join us if you can. And then on Tuesday, March nineteenth, as you heard Scott talked earlier about the DSP program and the growth there, and how we are an exemplar and leader in educating individuals to move into that space, there will be an announcement by New York State Office for People With Developmental Disabilities here at DCC about an addition of, an additional funding stream to support that program. So, with us is going to be the Chancellor of SUNY, John King, as well as Commissioner for the Office for People With Developmental Disabilities, Carrie Neifeld. So, we invite you to join us for that event as well. We'll certainly be sending out notices and invitations to that event. Mr. Chairman, that is the end of my report.
Any questions for Mr. President? There being none. Are there any items for other business or future business? There being none. The date of the next meeting is March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. A reminder that we'll be having dinner with student government that night, so we'll start at five o'clock rather than six. And they get a motion to adjourn. Yes?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.